Welcome. This is Notice of Regular Term Meeting, B County Commissioners Court. Today is Monday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, at nine o'clock in the morning. We're located in the county courthouse, Commissioners' courtroom number one-ten, one-oh-five West Corpus Christi Street, Beaville, Texas, seven-eight-one-two. That is the official call to order. Now, if we could all stand for the prayer. Commissioner Lee, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for another day of life. We ask that you be with each and every one of us. Be with this Commissioners' Court that we may make the right decisions for the betterment of this county. Watch over everyone. Please ask for some rain, dear Lord. It's much needed. Be with all of us as we travel throughout the day, wherever we may be going. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congressman, please.
To the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Texas, please.
On honor of Texas's fire, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Once again, welcome. The judge couldn't make it this morning. He sends his regrets. The next item is recognize history. What do we do now? If you'd like to be recognized, you stand up, say who you are, and we'll kind of go from there. Anybody like to be recognized? It's not necessary, but if you want to be, now's your chance. You can be a movie star right now. Okay. The next item is Commissioners' Court opening remarks. And before they start the opening remarks, I have something to say. We had a jailer that had a tragedy in his family. Their house burned down. They lost their vehicle. Mr. John Boskis, if you want to help out, please contact the sheriff's office, the chief deputy, the dispatcher. They lost everything they had. Everybody's okay, but they lost it all. And put yourself in their place now. You've lost everything you've got. You have nothing. So probably the thing they need most is financial aid. If you can, give what you can. If you want to give something to the bailiffs, to relay to the sheriff's office, that would be fine. My wife and I have already done something. I hope the rest of the Commissioners' Court does something. So with that, which way do we start, gentlemen?
Good morning, everyone. First of all, I'd like to recognize the judge morale on the signing of some key documents that we need to help manage the project. So this is part of the EOC, and as we go through the EOC building, we... Did I say something wrong? So anyhow, you know, getting key documents through the court system is always a key, and it can slow down a project pretty quick. So as documents came through, the judge signed off, by the way, so just wanted to thank you for that. Also, I wanted to thank Jeff Fassalda with the appraisal district for spending some time with me to further understand and educate me on the process of the appraisal process, which can be pretty complex. The key thing to all of this is that individuals that may have any question on the appraisal values, you know, they need to learn how to protest and bring it forward. So just some general notes on the... I had an opportunity to attend the South Texas Recovery Foundation. It was an awesome event. Great testimonial from some of the members that were there, and it was great work that's being done by those individuals, by what they're doing to help these individuals get overcome some of the challenges they're being faced with. Also, kind of give you a little bit of an update on the EOC building. As far as safety goes, to date, we've had no incidents and only one near miss that we had to record. So that was pretty good. I think it's really great that you can have a project and hopefully have no accidents. Also, Angela with Grant Works validated the twenty subcontractors that we have in to do the workforce on our behalf. None of them were disbarred or executed or excluded from participation in federal grant programs. So that's a key factor. They all qualify to be the workforce. Also, I'd like to recognize Jennifer Reyna for facilitating a couple of meetings that we had concerning the EOC building, addressing project needs such as the ADA room and also the IT conduit challenges that we have. Ambie has continued to complete their work with the rebar, looking to set up some meetings here to talk about what we call a pre-core. As prior to pouring the concrete, we're going to have a meeting to make sure everything's all right before the meeting, before the concrete gets started. Part of that is also coordinating with the testing facilities that prior, during the concrete pour that we're getting fully exhaled. So there's going to be some concrete testing that's going to be done during that time. The actual date, barring any weather or rain, we're looking to have the concrete to start pouring on the eleventh. However, there will be a pre-core meeting, as I called earlier, on the tenth, the day before, to determine if there's any issues that we need to make changes. So we delayed it a few days because of some issues that came up, and it was best that we did to get these things in place. Down in Skidmore, received a call. We had an individual that was placing some debris on county road that provided hindrance to our school buses to make the U-turns. And apparently, this has been an ongoing event for a couple of years, and apparently, this is the year he decided to do it again. Received the call from the school. We went there. We were able to pick up the debris, and the buses were now able to make a U-turn in our cul-de-sac. Our constable, Mr. Ronnie Olivares, will be following an official report with the SO so we can have something on record should it occur again in the future. In Tynan, we completed the final inspection of the project. We're now just waiting for final approval DCEQ before we can make it fully functional. So hopefully, that's going well. And with that, I'll go over to the right.
All right. Been a busy two weeks here. The first one was, I had a meeting with TexDOT and Repirio, and the reason I had that is because the Blanconia Fire Department doesn't fall into the B County TexDOT. It falls into the Repirio District. So I was trying to get them some gravel through their entrance along the highway twenty-four forty-one. It's very, all eaten up, and they're going to take care of that for it. They're going to also widen twenty-four forty-one for eight miles, starting on two-oh-two. So that project's already going to begin in a couple of months. Also found out that we hadn't gotten our allotment of gravel, and kicking that nest around for a little bit, we finally got the signatures, and B County got allotted about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars with the gravel that we were supposed to get anyway, but it got that going. So Roden Bridge should have that, be able to collect that, and at no cost to taxpayers. That's our gravel. The other one is the... I attended the recovery grand opening over there on eight-eight-eight with Judge Teal. Well-attended, like Commissioner DeVita said. There was about two-hundred people there, and I didn't know that was going on there. It's all private. There's no state funding, no insurance, and they can do up to ten residents at a time. Thirty-day program for alcohol and drug abuse there. So that's something to see as you go out. It's only a few miles out on eight-eight-eight on the left-hand side there. They have a little farm there. They have a garden, animals and things like that. So it's coming along. It's that barnumium-looking thing there. So I'm sure we'll invite them to come over to the court to share with us what they do there, and we want to support that. The other one is Dr. TexDOT. They were those big rocks you see on fifty-nine west here on Jackson Street and fifty-nine. It's a... They're going to update the underneath the bridge will wash out. They're going to put one-foot rocks underneath that bridge. They're going to clean it all out. They're going to re-support that bridge with all those rocks that they got there. So that's an upcoming project coming there. The electrical at the tax office building, we had a meeting with AEP, our Ms. Mattis, and all the contractors. Mr. DeVita's been invited over, and we're going to get that project started here by the end of the month. So they're going to upgrade the electrical, and that should be the final part to that building over there. That electrical there was not done correctly since I don't know when. You know, it's going back years and years. I have a meeting this Thursday in Austin with the Jail Standards Commission Advisory Board, so I'll be attending that. And let's see. We have an item on the agenda that you'll see later on, and it's the taking care of the Wendy Hills RV part, all the debris that's on the right away, and you'll learn more about that in a while. So with that, I'll pass. I'll go last. Commissioner Teal, the next, sir. No problem. I had a few people reach out to me on needing some help with some limbs to be trimmed. They had some big limbs that were posing a threat to their property and structures. So we had helped... I want to thank Robbie for helping me on a Saturday on his day off, as well as one afternoon after five o'clock after he was done with his work. But we helped a lady there on Carr Road, East Florinoy, and a lady in Skidmore that was needing that badly. So got that done. Thank you, Robbie. Also, Roden Bridge, thanks to Ray Lomboria and Kenneth Mendoza and the crew of three-thirty-one needed some bad repair, and they got that all patched up for us. So thank you, guys, for that. Also, I want to thank John Izagiri. We had an issue the other day at the expo where they had only half the power, and it turned out AEP came and looked at it, and the line going from three-fifty-one to the transformer was old and corroded. So they actually bored under the entire parking lot and replaced all that line. Got it done same day. The guy said that it was just corroded, old and... ...old and current. So that's all replaced with brand-new wiring. Also, I know I mentioned it last time. If you're still interested in wanting to participate in a community event softball tournament, it's the citizens versus the sheriff's office and the fire department, Angel Care and the police department, just as they come together. It's an all-day event out at Ternaker Park. You can either participate, or you can actually full sign up for a team. And the number to call is three-six-one-two-five-four-one-seven-zero-six. If you're interested, they've got enough sponsors that everything is taken care of as far as jerseys and all that good stuff. It's no charge. Just call and sign up, and you can participate. With that, I will pass back to my left.
Thank you, sir. Everything's pretty routine in the precinct. One thing that I do want to tell everybody, and we're all getting calls about this, from the Loop three-fifty-one to Pawnee, part of Martin six-seventy-three is going to be widened. They're going to add some pavement on each side. And we're getting a lot of calls, why are they putting survey stakes on our property? That's why. They're finding out where everybody's property lines are, one thing or another. So somebody called and said, hey, I didn't ask for those survey stakes. We didn't either. The highway department's doing that. We're trying to get them also when you're coming off of three-fifty-one, that's the one that goes past McCoy's on down and around to fifty-nine. We're trying to get them to put a turn lane in where it comes off of three-fifty-one onto six-seventy-three. That's where those stations are right now. That's creating some problems for a lot of people. But the problem is, if you go and look, there's a big drainage area right there to the right, and they've got to figure out how to take care of that. Now, they're engineers. They can do it if they want to. Government can do anything it wants to if it wants to. So if they want to do it, they will. If they can't, they won't. I noticed, too, that we've got some new lights going in where there's blinking lights now. We're here on the bypass on what's that road?
Two-one.
No, four-one. They're putting in the top of lights instead of the hanging blinking lights. They're putting in the regular lights. So you'll be seeing all that going on right now. What I'd like to do now is...
At the bypass?
Yeah, at the bypass.
Off the strip.
Take a little time trip this morning, from nineteen-seventy to last week, and you'll understand where I'm coming from by the time we get to the end. In nineteen-seventy, the state of Texas decided that the state parks needed law enforcement. We had none. It was up to the game lords and the local deputies to do things in the park. So twelve people volunteered in nineteen-seventy to be the first state park police force. I was one of the twelve. I'm the only one still alive. We were commissioned. The state park police were formed in nineteen-seventy-one. Okay, I've kept my commission active since nineteen-seventy. New state laws came into effect after the Uvalde shooting that says you've got to start taking this type of training. The type of training they have to have is called Active Shooter Alert. This is the book that they have. Very, very comprehensive. This was done, the local training was done last week in Skidmore. The type of training that it is, is extremely physical. It is... They use simunition. You're shooting each other. You're literally shooting each other, and it hurts. And you're wearing a ballistic vest. You've got on headgear. You've got on groin protection, but it hurts if you get hit. I have my hats off, and the reason I'm bringing it up, I don't think we, all of us, realize what our local law enforcement people go through. We've got Deputy Solis. We've got Deputy Horner. We've got Chief Deputy here. What they go through on a daily basis, what they have to be ready to do, the training we got, tourniquets, bombs, hostages, any kind of scenario you can come up with in a school, we train for it. And there's going to be other scenarios we didn't train for that are going to happen. But running, rolling on the floor, shooting each other, getting shot at, one comical thing that happened when three or more officers are going down a hall, they're focusing on the threat down at the end of the hall. Well, the last officer's supposed to be watching behind to make sure that no one's coming up behind him. Well, this last officer didn't watch, and one of the bad guys got behind him and shot him in the rear end several times. So after that, he was watching very attentively, I can assure you, because you have the ballistic vest that covers you here. You have the headgear on, but you're not covered back here. So great training. Every peace officer in Texas has to have this training. It's not just local. It is the entire state of Texas to keep your commission active. There were twenty-three in the class I was in. I went through on Wednesday and Thursday. The first class was Tuesday, and then Monday and Tuesday. We appreciate the Skidmore School allowing the old high school to be utilized for the training. They moved into the new high school in December. It was perfect training. One person I'd like to call out, Ryan Torino from the BISD.
The... The SO?
SO now. I'm sorry. The instructors called him out specifically for the thinking outside the box. Okay, let's say this is the hallway going down to the classroom, and the classroom is over here that the bad guy's in. They got in the hall, put their knees down, got on the shoulder, and looked in a window to see what was going on. So thinking outside the box, and my hat's off to Officer Torino for what he did, and the instructors praised him for what he did. So you never know what's going to happen, but when you see these officers... Okay, I hadn't worn a ballistic vest in years. They're hot. They're heavy. They wear them all the time. Never complain. You don't even know they have them on. Thank them sometime for what they do. They're underpaid. They're overworked, and we trained with DPS. There were people from Repirio. There were people from Edna. A whole mess of people came together and coalesced, and it's amazing how quickly they become a team. So when you see somebody that's in law enforcement, first responders, thank them. They don't ask for it, but they're dedicated, and they need praise every now and then. So please thank them. With that, gentlemen, unless there's some questions, we'll move along. Public comment. Anyone want to come to the lectern and address the public? No one? Awesome. Number seven. The following items are of administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon without being discussed separately unless requested by Commissioner or county judge. We have a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? All opposed, same sign. Item number eight, and I think this is the auditor's office. Approved amendment to contract with Tharnoff Consulting Engineering, DBA West Texas Consultants, Inc., for the Texas Department of Agriculture, grant number CFC twenty-one-dat-zero-four-seven-eight. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Reyna.
Jennifer Reyna, Grant Hutter, this item is more for like housekeeping, if you will. We need to retro the amendment to this contract. It was done last year. So this is housekeeping that Judge needs to sign.
Okay. You have a motion?
Make a motion, please.
Second. Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Pass it to the United... Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine. Approved proclamation designating April two thousand twenty-four as National Safe Digging Month in B County. I think Mr. Dave Cave has some information for us, sir, if you'd like to. Go to the lectern.
Thank you. David Cave. I'm the chair of the B County LEPC, and we'd like to thank not only the judge, but the commissioners for partnering with the LEPC, trying to make awareness on safe digging for the month of April, and this helps promote everyone's awareness of any type of digging in the area for this month. Every digging project requires that you call the eight-one-one center before digging, even small projects like planting trees or shrubs. If you hit an underground utility line while digging, you could harm yourself and those around and disrupt vital services to an entire neighborhood or community. You could also be responsible for fines and repair costs. A survey conducted revealed that fifty-eight percent of American homeowners personally plan to complete a home project involving digging, such as gardening, building a fence or a deck, installing a mailbox, and more in the next twelve months. However, forty-nine percent of them, or nearly thirty-four-point-nine billion Americans, will put themselves and their communities at risk by digging without contacting eight-one-one before to learn the approximate location of any underground utilities, including fiber optics. Now, you can simply dial eight-one-one to reach the one-call center regardless of where you're digging. Whether you're a homeowner or a professional excavator, your call to eight-one-one allows affected facility operators to locate and mark their underground facilities in the area you are digging. There is no cost. Even the call is free. So call eight-one-one before you dig. If you can't connect to the one-call center by dialing eight-one-one, you can dial one-eight-eight-eight-two-five-eight-zero-eight-zero-eight to get a toll-free direct dial number for the one-call center in your area. Again, remember, it is your responsibility. You must call before digging. So when you call, the one-call center will collect information about the location of your intended dig, and then contact the companies that may operate underground facilities in that location, facilities such as hazardous liquid and natural gas lines, pipelines, telecommunications systems, electrical systems, and sewer and water pipelines. Those companies must by law determine if their facilities could be affected by your excavation. If so, they must visit the excavation site and mark the exact location of their facilities with flags or paint. State laws specify how much time they have to perform these actions, and thus, how far in advance you must call before digging. So don't assume that you know what's below the ground. Protect yourself and those around you. Call eight-one-one before you dig every time. Again, the call is free. There is no cost to the person that wants to check the lines or check their property. It is your responsibility to call before you dig, wait the required time for facilities to be located and marked, respect the marks, and dig with care to avoid damaging underground facilities. So again, if I haven't said it enough, please do not assume there's nothing below the ground where you're going to be digging. Be safe and make that free eight-one-one call. Now, we had hoped, and we had scheduled Jesse Torres, the Texas eight-one-one damage prevention manager for southeast region of Texas, to be here to be part of this. But unfortunately, with Eclipse, him and so many other state workers are being called to other areas to help facilitate what may be happening after lunch. Thank you.
You know, I'm not sure whether you said it or not, but call eight-one-one if you have a question.
Exactly.
I have used it several times. It's so simple. They will ask you some basic information, their location and all. In a couple of days, these trucks show up. They're putting flags in. They're putting paint down. And if you don't call, correct me if I'm wrong, and you cut that line, guess who's going to pay to replace that line or repair that line? You are, because you're supposed to call. And depending on what type of lining is, it could be in the thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars. So win down, call that number. In case... Mission, you get eight-one-one, right?
Eight-one-one. And I'll just...
Doesn't take long here.
For a second, that they've also told us before, if you're out in the country and you're going to be digging post or whatever, and you see one marker over there and one marker over there, and you eyeball it, there's been people that didn't realize that over time, that pipeline has migrated a little bit and moved. So that's not the way to always trust it.
I called. I wanted to put in a water well out on my ranch. There's a pipeline hundred-fifty yards over there. I called. They came out on the ranch and marked it off, so we knew where it was. We didn't want to hit it. So I know you want to take some pictures. Let's make a motion, and do we want to read that? Would you like to read the proclamation into the record, sir?
Sure.
Before we take a motion, we'll read the proclamation?
Okay. B County Proclamation and Observance of National Safe Digging Month. Whereas each year, the nation's underground utility infrastructure is jeopardized by initiating damage by those who have all failed to call Texas eight-one-one before digging. And whereas failing to call eight-one-one prior to digging can result in undesired consequences such as personal injury, potential service interruption, property damage, potential fines, and repair costs. And whereas excavators, homeowners, ranchers, and farmers can save time and money by using safe digging practices. And whereas, in partnership with B County Local Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC, Texas eight-one-one... And whereas in partnership with B County Local Emergency Planning Committee, L E P C, Texas eight-one-one and B County Commissioners Court recognize National Safe Digging Month in conjunction with onset peak digging to elevate the awareness and the participation in the prevention of digging-related utility damage. Now therefore we, the Commissioners Court of B County, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April of two thousand twenty-four to be National Safe Digging Month. In B County and urges all citizens to always contact eight-one-one before starting any digging projects to stay, to stay safe and prevent damages to underground facilities and property. It witnessed whereof, drawn to sign officially by B County Judge and cause the official seal of B County to be affixed on this eighth of April of two thousand twenty-four.
Very good, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, unanimous. Mr. Cave, I understand.
Yes, if we can get a quick picture.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think you said you're the photographer for us. Grabbing some of our pipeline over here, aye?
Gee. Gee, please, you're, you're. Little sir, how are you? You ready? Can you get everybody?
Yes.
Take about four, five.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Senator, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dana.
Commissioner, what was that phone number again? Eight-one-one?
Oh, real quick, if I can?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I did wanna say that we plan to put this proclamation on the B County L E P C website, that if anybody would like to read it, they can. And again, if you don't know where the B County L E P C site is, go to the B County main webpage and you will see L E P C on there. Click on it and you can, you can see this, uh, website, we'll have this hopefully soon. And there's a lot of videos that are available on that for safety and chemical emergencies, as well as there's some free downloads on there if you would like to participate.
Now, do you have the court's copy with you? Do we need that back?
Oh.
Thank you. Okay, item number ten, uh, we're gonna review the employee retirement, Texas County District Retirement Assistant T C D R S plan contributions. We are looking at, uh, what the county pays in, the employee pays in a dollar, the county pays in a dollar seventy-five. We wanted to increase that, but we do not have the dollar amount back from T C D R S at this time, so I would request that we table this. So we'll move to table.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll bring it back because it is something very important. Number eleven, approved updated rest disposal lease agreement between B County and the Morris Family Farm for the Road and Bridge Department. Uh, is anyone from Road and Bridge here?
Just housekeeping.
It's, it's housekeeping, housekeeping. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pass unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, approved B County Road and Bridge Department to clean up all debris and junk materials discarded by Jesse Lopez, a tenant of Jesse Garza on county right-of-way that could potentially lead to public health and safety standards. Commissioner, for this, I think this is your item, sir.
Yes, sir. We've chased this thing for about a year, year and a half now and come down to the end. Uh, the tenant, James Lopez, has been evicted. The rest of, and, uh, the debris that's there, he's migrated it over to the county right-of-way and onto the roadway. And, um, we're wanting to get the Road and Bridge Department to pick it up, dispose of it, and then we'll send the bill or whatever, Mr. Jesse Lopez.
Okay, uh, our county attorneys here, do you have any comments on this, sir?
Uh, one comment, uh, the material in question was placed on the county right-of-way, and the county always maintains the right to maintain its right-of-ways free and clear of any obstruction. And so that bill should be directed to Mr. Lopez.
Okay. So we'll make a correction. Second, Mr. Lopez.
Appreciate it. Okay.
You're just what's on the county right-of-way, not the whole property or?
No, not, not the whole property, we don't go on par property, but everything is, it's a sixty-foot right-of-way and that road's already narrowed down to about fifty, fourteen feet, because he's got debris on both sides.
I'm gonna use discretion since I'm the county judge this morning, and I'd like to read something in the record that, that I would like, the motion is made, it just be adopted into the motion. Thought about this over the weekend, there's a lot going on over there. There are at least two vehicles in this right-of-way. There's a motorcycle, there's a title trailer. Those have to be handled differently than just Road and Bridge going out and picking them up and getting rid of them. Uh, the sheriff's office gets involved. It could become contentious very quickly if somebody says, what are you, that's my vehicle, you, you stole it, and that's worth a million dollars. So I, I wrote a few things down that I think we should include. I, I, I know what the item says, Road and Bridge is gonna go clean it up. That sounds very simplistic, there's a lot more moving parts to that, and bear with me while I read this, please. It's entitled Health and Safety Cleanup Remediation Methods, Procedures, and Assignments, four eight to twenty-four. Number one, responsibility, all departments cleanup remediation utilizing B County equipment and personnel. All departments compile accurate detailed expense records, including work hours, mileage, equipment, hourly cost, disposal fees, submit to the B County Judge within fifteen days of project completion. Road and Bridge responsibility, items and materials removed to be disposed of appropriately with record of normal fees and disposal costs. Number three, precinct three commissioner responsibility, photo document areas and related elements before initiating cleanup. Precinct three commissioner responsibility, supervised cleanup, someone has to be there to supervise. Supervised cleanup outside from beginning, onsite from beginning through completion, Road and Bridge responsibility. Adjacent roadways to be blocked approximately appropriately with cones, with Road and Bridge personnel assisting with traffic control. Number six, precinct three commissioner responsibility, onsite destination of distance to remediate and clean from center of county roadway thirty foot to the right and left of center. Our county roadways are all different as far as their width, depends on where they're put in, eighteen ninety, nineteen ten, nineteen sixty, or whatever. Normally they're sixty-foot wide. So if you go to the center of the road and go thirty foot on each side, you should be in the, should be in the county right-of-way. Number seven, precinct three commissioner responsibility, document records straight line distance on roadway with spray paint at beginning and end of cleanup area. In other words, how much are we gonna clean up from here to there, not just over here, over yonder, whatever. Sheriff's Office responsibility, B County law enforcement personnel to be on site during cleanup remediation for security and traffic control. Number nine, Sheriff's Office responsibility, abandoned title items including trailers, motorcycles, and vehicles touching pavement will be legally towed with five-day notice for removal before towing. We can't just go pick that stuff up without doing it legally. I don't wanna jeopardize the county. This has never been done before in B County. I, I think we need a procedure, I think this is gonna be what I'm recommending. Then an after-action compilation, precinct three responsibility, photo records document area after cleanup complete, record any notable occurrences during cleanup remediation, sign date, and deliver said document to B County Judge for review and filing. Nothing will probably come back on the county, but if we don't document what we remove, and we don't document the way it looked before and after, we're leaving ourselves wide open. Uh, the guy could say, hey, that was a prized piece of equipment I had, and y'all took it. I realize it's illegally on county property, but I think we need to protect B County property. With that, Commissioner, I would like for this to be put in with the motion.
Okay, we'll put that in with the motion. Mr. Knight, did you hear anything on that addition there that we need to be concerned about?
No, Your Honor. Actually, that would be you, because by tradition, when the judge is absent, the senior commissioner is county judge for the day.
Yes, sir.
I see no problem with that.
No problem, sir.
And for the public, uh, this is a little bit different scenario. This is not Road and Bridge clearing up storm debris or, or someone who's engaged in illegal dumping. This is just a little bit different, and, uh, I think it's beneficial to have a procedure in place, and certainly to document, uh, what was removed. Because individual in question had sixty days to remove this, and he was given additional time, approximately three weeks, and he's been re-noticed to move the stuff. And unfortunately, this is one of those circumstances where it's going to get worse before it gets better. And, uh, I couldn't believe that the matters could get worse, but it did get worse.
It did get worse.
I think that's a fair statement, but, uh, the county and the public is not without its rights, and we are entitled to maintain our right-of-ways free and clear of obstructions. And those certainly are obstruction. Thank you.
I went by there Saturday and took some photos, and it's like it's growing, it's just morphing upon itself. If you haven't been by before it's cleaned up, go look.
I'm out there every day, morning and night.
Do you have a motion, sir?
Take a motion that we move forward with the cleanup and, uh, get the assist from Road and Bridge to move debris and include the, uh, the ten items on your list.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Pass unanimously. Thank you, sir, and good work on everybody's part. I know it's taken three years to get there, and I know we have Attorney General's ruling that's gonna assist us, but, uh, we've gotta do it properly. Thank you.
One, one question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Judge?
Yes, no, go ahead.
Um, it was interesting to note that this is really the first time that the county has seen anything like this or act upon this, so we don't have any procedures in place prior to this or anything close to it?
Let me.
And this might change, you know?
Being in that position that was in charge of health and safety rules for a number of years. I think that something I would have done that wasn't done is that I, normally when I was in that position, I filed on the landowner more so than the tenant. And, and what's gonna happen now, in my opinion, okay, this is gonna be cleaned up, pristine county right-of-way. If this stuff is over here that's still a health and safety hazard, now the landowner for sure has to be filed on to clean it up. Uh, don't hesitate. Don't, you're not gonna do it or not, do it. Uh, do your job, follow the person that goes to the J P. You've done your job, you've done what you're supposed to, and he goes from there. We've been, I'm gonna say messing with this for three years. Uh, we're to a final point now, and it's, it's my knowledge that Mr. Lopez is gone, is he being evicted? Is he gone?
He's been evicted.
He has been evicted, so he's not there. But what I'm seeing now, because one of the cars still has a chain on the front of it, somebody just drug it over there. You know, hey, county's gonna pick it up, let's get rid of this rascal. So I hope we don't have to come up with a formal procedure, but if we do, we've got ten sets of guidelines that could be put into it. What you get into, you got private property you're dealing with.
Correct.
So it gets, it gets sticky real quick.
Now, this is a good, great start.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along. Approved Skidmore street lighting upgrade to convert seven two-hundred-and-fifty watt H P S lights to one-hundred-and-twenty-two watts L E D streetlights for safety. Uh, Mr. Commissioner Oliveras, I think this is your, sir.
Yes, thank you. Uh, one of the areas is going down Main Street, some of the lighting is, is, they're using some old lighting, some of the old sodium vapor lights, and it is kinda dark. And I've had several constituents from the county saying they're having trouble when they pull out and see him. Of course, you know, there's many answers to become by that, but anyhow, uh, we were able to get and work with A E P to upgrade the lighting for minimal cost. Uh, we're looking at, uh, nine-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars to upgrade the lights, plus the county's gonna save some dollars at the end because we're, because of the upgrade. It's gonna require a lot less power, so a motion, uh, to the court would be if we would approve the, let me get the dollar correct here.
Nine sixty-five.
Yeah, nine sixty, uh, thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, uh, nine sixty-five oh two. Uh, approval to utilize the funds from the county to do that. I've, I've had some conversation with Madam Auditor, and we do have the funds available to do that.
Very good, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to compliment the, uh, Commissioner because I think that's, that's a good thing. There's more around the county we might wanna look at, like on twenty-eight, twenty-four, or some other places, so. You've broken, you've broken the mold for us, so thank you. Opposed, same sign. Pass unanimously. Thank you. We're gonna, number fourteen, approved B County Clerk's request to use the B County credit card to apply hotel charges for two thousand twenty-four probate academy at Moody Gardens Hotel, May seventh through May tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
So move.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Pass unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fifteen, approved use of funding from the Rural Law Enforcement Senate Bill twenty-two grant program for the sheriff's office. Chief Deputy, I think it's your item, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
We, uh, Senate Bill twenty-two, Rural Law Enforcement, uh, we, we have the money, uh, it's been deposited, and, uh, we have two sets of backup, what we can do with money. Talking to two different entities about this pack and Controller's Office, not really on the same page, that's why you have two sets of backup. Uh, talking to Controller's Office, the one that will audit us, uh, has changed the amount of employees that are covered under this, uh, and I think that may change again. We, uh, wanna table this, do a little more research. I wanna give these people a break as soon as we can, but I wanna do it right and not have to pay back the money. If we can table this and, uh, do this again.
Sure, I have a motion to table.
Any questions?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
I have just one quick question yet, uh, Chief Deputy, one of the things we need to look at, I know this is targeting, you know, certain groups of individuals. I wanna take a little bit broader look because of some of the challenges you could have with those that may not be affected by the ways.
Oh, we are looking at that.
Okay.
It's better to be safe.
Yeah.
On your, on your move.
It's, uh, right now it's limiting the amount of personnel. There's personnel that are not affected, that we're gonna have to use someone in the county to, to take care of that as well.
So it's good on the front, too.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Pass unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Chief Deputy. Thank you, sir. Number sixteen, approved memorandum of understanding between B County Sheriff's Office and the Pettus Teleated Volunteer Fire Department for the use of a light bar and sirens.
Uh, basically, the M O U is between, uh, ourselves and Pettus Teleated Fire Department. They approached us, they're outfitting another rig, they need some equipment, we have some extra equipment. Had them go through the county judge to, to approve the, the idea, and that's where you see the M O U.
You have a motion?
So approve.
Move to approve, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I am always, uh, gratified to see us working together with the local fire departments and them working with us, they do such a great job, we appreciate you being here, Chief. Thank you, sir. Number seventeen, approved use of funding from the Safety Assistance Senate Bill twenty-two grant program for the county attorney's office.
Good morning, Matters.
Good morning.
If you identify yourself for the clerk.
Brian Watson from the county attorney's office, I'm here with Mike Knight, our elected county attorney. We've given you some information on our, our plans to distribute these S B twenty-two funds. As, uh, the chief deputy said, we have received the money, they're, they're in the county coffers, and it's time to disperse them. So there's some restrictions on the way that these S B twenty-two funds can be used. The big stipulation for commissioners is that you can't reduce the funding to any law enforcement agency or prosecutor's office as a result of getting the funds. So these have to be additional funds that are dispersed, basically used for salary increases or hiring new positions. We've received a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, which is the, the amount, the standard amount we've received for a county of our size. Uh, that can be split, uh, between our, our, our employees. Now, the, the catch here is that under the, the terms in this S B twenty-two bill, they really only allow assistant attorneys, uh, victim assistance coordinators, and investigators to receive salary increases. So that kinda leaves us in a little bit of a quandary as to what to do with our, our legal staff. Now, the reality is our paralegal staff, uh, certainly assists victims each and every day, uh, whether it's at the window, whether it's in court, whether it's on the phone. Uh, everyone in our county attorney's office works for victims, that's why we're there. So there's gonna be a, a concordant proposal to reclassify the, uh, the titles for the administrative assistants, uh, into a more victims' assistance coordinator official role, also be receiving some additional training. some additional training to make sure that that's compliant with our state laws on victims' assistance coordinators. They're going to be managed, of course, by Mr. Knight, the elected county attorney, but also by Christina Sokovia, our victims' assistance coordinator. So we will have job descriptions for you for those reclassifications, but as far as the money is concerned, you can see the breakdown in the handout I provided that essentially allocates the funding accordingly. And of course, the bill also allows all of the benefit increases to be paid out from grant funds. So you're going to see a total utilization of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is going to include the benefit increases. And so the HR department has been very good in providing the calculations for that, and so we've been able to put that all out there. Now, the other thing to keep in mind is obviously we're about almost halfway into our fiscal year. And so this, these funds have been distributed for this fiscal year, and obviously, you know, depending on how the court wants to proceed, we can either reserve a portion or we can maybe change these numbers to do a more pro-rata increase for this fiscal year alone. The thing that we don't know, that we've got to get clarity on from the comptroller's office, is if we don't use all the funds in a grant year, are they going to be clawed back from the state or are they going to roll over? So that's something we want to get some clarity on. If y'all would like to take action today on this proposal, I think that would certainly be fine, and we can always come back and do a budget amendment once we have an answer on that. Or if you feel more comfortable tabling it until we have an answer on whether we need to do pro-rata or whether there's going to be a clawback, we can certainly come back at the next commissioner's court and have that answer for you.
I know that the sheriff's office did some checking with PAC and the comptroller's office. Have y'all done the same thing?
We've done some initial checking with the comptroller's office. We also want to run by our actual, our title changes. We want to give the descriptions to the comptroller's office and see if we can get approval from them. I don't know if they're going to provide that approval or not. The bill is very vague. This is what's caused a lot of the issues in prosecutor's offices and law enforcement offices across the state. There's just not a lot of meat on it to clarify exactly, you know, how things are supposed to work. So working within those guidelines, we've certainly looked at the promulgated rules from the comptroller's office, but really it's mostly just a restatement of the law.
Let me ask a question of the office. Would y'all feel more comfortable if we're tabled along with the sheriff's office for additional information, come back the next meeting, or you want to proceed? It's up to you, sir.
We will abide by whatever the court decides, and as Mr. Watson has mentioned, this is very vague. But I can speak with clarity on one issue. There's no retroactive payment.
Right.
And so anything that's going to be done is going to be done for the future. I think that our research is valid and it will hold up, but it's whatever the court is comfortable with.
To be honest, I would recommend it just be tabled and we'll have a full court to look at it and it gives y'all a little more time.
We have no objection with that because I would, personally, I would prefer to have a full court.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
Instead of doing a reserve like you mentioned, if it was already earmarked and say this is what's going to be, it's already proportioned out for whatever, and that way we wouldn't have a jeopardy of losing it.
Well, and that would be good. And so that's because that's the trick, is we don't know when these salaries are going to go into place, and so obviously we need to have a date for that to start so that we can make the calculation to do the pro-rata salary increases for this fiscal year. So I guess if we just calendar it, you know, tentatively for the next commissioner's court for those to go into action, and then I can make those calculations, certainly.
I would feel more comfortable with that. I think, I agree with you. A full court will be better also.
Make a motion to table for the next commissioner's court.
I have a second with comment.
Motion in a second to comment.
Yeah, thanks for doing some of the research. I also read the Senate bill, you write it's very, very vague. And what it was good to hear is that sometimes these job descriptions aren't always clear as far as what they're covered, and someone could miss out on an opportunity just by not having the right word in there. So that's a key part to take a look at that way everyone can capture the benefits of this. As I said in the past, our people are most benefit to the county, so we need to make sure that they can achieve some of those values that are out there. Need to take an hour, we may lose it in the future.
That's exactly right. Our paralegal staff is incredibly hardworking and they're key to the decisions in the county attorney's office. We can't do our jobs without them. They're very valued and they're very underpaid, and so this is a great opportunity for us to give them an increase that's commensurate with what they provide the citizens of B County.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
One last thing, I think what is really amusing about this, and I've been asked about this in case you have a question. If everything goes as proposed, the assistant county attorney will be making more than the county attorney. And in a nutshell, I don't have a problem with that because we have a great difficulty in being able to attract and retain people these days. And I think that's something that the DA's offices face and county attorneys across Texas because the difference is this. When I graduated in nineteen eighty-eight from law school, I didn't have any, I didn't owe anything. I didn't have anything, but I didn't owe anything. And typically, most of our graduates now come out of law school with an incredible amount of debt. I talked to an attorney the other day who's still paying off her student loans after twenty-seven years. And so that's one of the driving factors in how the salaries have increased for ADAs and assistant county attorneys. And if that's what's necessary to attract and retain good people, then so be it. And I don't have a problem with that because I'm at a different stage of life, and that's another metaphor for being old. You know, I paid my bills, I don't have any debt other than this normal bill, so.
Thank you. Perish some excuse. Please, for being here. All those opposed, same sign. Pass you down. Thank you, gentlemen. Counselors, thank y'all for being here. Number eighteen, approve use of funding for rural salary assistance Senate Bill twenty-two grant program for the district attorney's office. Jose Alaceta, you're up, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
My name is Jose Alaceta, I'm the district attorney for the one fifty-six judicial district. We're not in the same situation as the county attorneys in because we had some reserves last year, and if y'all will recall, I asked for my raises last year and we used some of the reserves to pay for that. So what we're doing right now is we're tweaking some of the positions because while you guys had approved those raises last year, we also got some additional funding from another grant that I have, which is the border prosecution unit. And we used some of those monies to help increase the salaries, and we're asking for an additional increase on some of those SB twenty-two salaries from what we saved from the BPU. So maybe I could have my first assistant explain that, but what we're trying to do, as the county attorney said, we're trying to keep qualified individuals in these assistant district attorney positions because the salaries in the private sector are much higher than what we've been able to, and that's for people coming out of law school. We're trying to recruit experienced individuals, and yet we are competing with people coming straight out of law school and making the same amount as an experienced assistant district attorney's making. So that's the reason this grant was proposed in the Senate and approved by the House and approved by the governor, is to keep individuals in this vital position, which is prosecution of criminals. Now, as the county attorney said, we can only use this for investigators and for assistant DA's, and that's our intention here. And I'll let the first assistant explain what exactly, how we're breaking that down.
Good morning, General Manager.
Good morning.
Real simple though, just because a lot of words confuse me, so let me be clear. We're not asking the county for any money. This is money we already have, and we're just apportioning it more correctly so that all the grant money will be used and none of it goes back and we don't lose it. So just want to make that clear. Like Mr. Alaceta said, you all already approved the use of these funds last year, at the end of last year. The difference was after that approval, we received some additional funds that weren't necessarily guaranteed from the border prosecution unit grant. So then instead of just using Senate Bill twenty-two to supplement salaries, we utilized some of that border prosecution grant as well. So now there's a couple of thousand dollars left over, and that's from the Senate Bill twenty-two, and that's what we're asking to do today, is instead of giving that money back to the state to award that to one of our border prosecution unit attorneys. And it's literally a change of going from a salary of one twenty-three, seven seventy to one twenty-five, two forty-five. So it's just a couple of thousand, and again, no money out of B County's coffers, it's grant. It's not salary money, it's not taxpayer money here directly, it's all taxpayer money some way or another. But at the end of the day, that's what we're doing, is just apportioning the funds that we already have here that we received from the state so that it can all be used.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Let's make a motion in a second.
You can all make a motion to approve.
And I have a motion in a second. More discussion.
Is that going to change the salary when we come up to budget again for this one, or is it going to continue on just picking up the grant money?
My intention is to keep the salaries the same this next, but that'll be up to, you know, I'll let my first assistant handle that budget because it'll be sometime in, when will you guys be addressing the next budget?
Next month.
Oh, you start next month.
Already.
Wow. Yeah, no, it's my intention right now to leave the salaries the same. We did tweak, there's an assistant district attorney vacant position that we had budgeted under the previous budget at one twenty-three. We're using some of those additional funds to propose the increase to one thirty, and once again, it's so that we can recruit someone qualified. If you look at the breakdown of the entire hundred and seventy-five thousand, it'll be...
We're going to have four dollars left.
It'll be...
That's inexcusable.
I was going to say, did you? So try to spend every last penny.
If you have any particular questions about the individual budget items, I can address those, but as you can see, there's a, number three is assistant district attorney vacant. We had it budgeted at one twenty-three, sixty-seven, we're moving that to one thirty. And then the, Mr. Tyler Oubre, he was budgeted at one twenty-three, seventy, and we increased his salary to one twenty-five. And then we use some for the investigator.
That's previously allotted. That's not a change. The only things that we're asking to change today are numbers three and four on your handout. And that's because of that BP and funding that came in so that we can apportion the remainder of the city. But yes, commissioner, what do you think?
So if you fill that vacant position at one thirty, some of the money you used were there for the other, you're taking some of that money now, right, from that vacant position?
No, it's allotted for that vacant position right now. So what's going to happen is if it takes us too long to fill that position, we're going to have money left.
Okay.
So...
I just feel if you did hire somebody later on, you could say, oh, we use that money.
No. We're, I understand the question, but no, it's allotted for one thirty right now, but every month we don't have an individual in there. You're right, like that money's sitting there.
And that money may end up going back.
It might.
It might get clawed back by the state if we don't use the entire.
No, I understand.
So that's why we're trying to, that's why we're trying to.
No, I was just worried about the vacant position, but when you use that vacant position, then all of a sudden, a month later, oh, we found somebody, we use that fund.
It's separate.
And it's not there anymore.
No, it's there.
Okay.
It's there. The money's there.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
That's it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Pass you down. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. I think we're on the next...
We are. Number nineteen, approve pay increase for legal assistance Kalish Kano due to case on additional job duties provided in Bullock County cases. The judge and I conferred on this. We feel like this is a budget item and not something that needs to be done now, that you look at this and make.
Because we look at it, this next commissioner's court meeting as well, as you did with the...
You want to table it then?
I would agree to the table, and we might tweak the language on here so that you know exactly what we're doing.
Do we have a motion to table?
So...
We have a motion to table in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is tabled.
Will we be extended?
Yes, sir, please. Thank y'all for being here. Number twenty, approve Texas opioid settlement agreements. To my knowledge, there are no agreements. Number twenty-one, Hurricane Harvey general land office, GLO community development block rent, CDBG status and project update. Commissioner Perez, anything?
No. No upgrades. I mean, no updates on that other than we got two weeks ago, so there's no new changes.
Application's going through, so...
All right. Number twenty-two, American Rescue Plant, ARP status and projects. Commissioner Lee, do you have anything on that, sir?
Commissioner Oliveras touched on all that.
You already touched on it?
It was in March.
All right. We have no executive session. The next item is number twenty-three, adjourned. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion? We have a second? Second motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.